We went surfing at the Pord Beach. Yeah, you want to hold on to.
I'd like to call the March 14th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to order. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, also, I need to get a motion to approve the minutes of the February 8th SDC Planning Board Meeting.
Motion, we approve it.
All in favor of approving? Any opposed? Thank you. Amy, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Uh, no ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Amy, you want to start with the land use code update?
Of course, tonight, we have Ms. Karen Mallow here to present regarding the land use update. So she, I have it kind of as an A and a B, but it's really an interactive conversation during the presentation, but it will be presentation and discussion kind of combined. It is not intended to be just Karen talking at us. It is intended for us to interact with her. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Karen. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you for having me. As you can tell, I am battling allergies, so I apologize for the little nasally conversation I will have tonight. But again, just to reiterate what Amy said, really meant to be interactive. I'm really trying to get your feedback on some of the chapters you may have already received and reviewed, and then to present some new ideas and concepts tonight that you will see in written version in the future. But again, just to try and get that conversation rolling and really get some good feedback on what we're proposing. Just for tonight, I'm not moving this slide, I'm moving it on here, sorry. Okay, so a quick agenda for tonight, and it's just again, just to go very quickly through, a status update, what you've already seen, which is the subdivision ordinance, and a recap of the couple of chapters you've already seen for zoning ordinance. That's what we covered at the last meeting. We'll just review that real quickly. For the zoning ordinance, we're going to go over some of the new sections, which are chapters or section six, which is environmental, and section eight, which is signs. And then we're going to go through some continued discussion on land uses, and then really go over zoning districts, because that's really where we are, because we can't get to the land uses until we solidify our zoning districts. And then we're going to have more open discussion where you guys can just pose sort of any questions, and we can really hammer home some of the things that we've already decided on. And then I'm going to give you some homework, as per usual, and then what we're going to be doing moving forward. Right here is just basically our status update. Anything in black is an article or a chapter that you've already seen, so that subdivision, the general provisions, I think we originally called it the introduction, administration and procedures. You've also seen definitions, which is section nine, and that's in that really dark green color. What we're intending there is that again, definitions is something you saw very early on, but we really want you to keep updating it. So anytime you're reading an article, and you just don't understand what a word means, or hey, I would really like an example or a diagram, what does this mean? We want you to let us know, so that chapter nine is going to be kind of like that ongoing one, probably the last one to be completed, simply because we'll want to, you know, just constantly be building on that. The chapters tonight that we're going to discuss are in gold, and again, that's chapter six and chapter eight, those are signs and environmental. And then green, we're going to start talking about tonight, and again, getting some initial feedback on some of those. You will have those written chapters over the next two weeks. Okay, so again, this is just a recap of what you saw, what I presented at the last meeting, and what you've hopefully read. And if you have not provided feedback, all of these documents are in the SharePoint. Amy can share that with you again, but the SharePoint site has all the copies of these ordinance sections, and it's in Word, and we intend for you to just go in and start editing right away into that document. Okay, so you might not be able to see that, because that is kind of tiny, but what we're going to go over, I'll actually look up here, because it's a little hard for me to see it that far back. But basically, we're going to go over, this was just talking about the subdivision sections, and that's the exempt subdivisions, expedited subdivisions, minor and major. They're basically going to go through the same sort of application process that the subdivision, that the things in the zoning ordinance will go through, but we've pulled these out, and they're just alone in a subdivision ordinance. This is how your current ordinance is set up, you have subdivision and zoning, so we're just continuing with that sort of format. On the right-hand side, you can see the outline that is proposed in that ordinance, general provisions, subdivision types and regulations, procedures, requirements, design standards, required improvements, that talks about utilities, roadways, driveway connections, pedestrian bicycle facilities, education facilities, open space and recreation, property owners association, definitions and certificates. Certificates is just legally what's required on those plans. This will tie in with a lot of the things in the zoning ordinance, and any subdivision is subject to the regulations in the zoning ordinance as well, just not everything in zoning is subject to subdivision. Sorry. Wrong way. Okay, back to the zoning ordinance, where we're going to spend the majority of our discussion today. The introduction, as we mentioned last time, I think it was called introduction, we're going to change that to general provisions, because really, it's just the legalese in the ordinance. It also contains language that says if one section of the ordinance becomes invalid, it does not invalidate the entire ordinance. It talks about the consistency with a comprehensive plan, and it also talks about transitional provisions. If anything, I think this is the most important section of chapter one. It tells you what happens when an application is currently submitted, and the ordinance changes during that submission process. It also talks about what happens to the current zoning districts, as we're going to talk about a little bit in chapter four. We'll talk about how some of those zoning districts might change, and what those changes will be, and those transitional provisions talk about how we handle that. Oh, again, I keep, sorry, I keep pressing the wrong way. Okay, section two, the administration, again, this was one of those chapters that we put into the ordinance, simply to make it a little bit easier to understand what boards and staff play a role in the development process in the town. So that's town council, planning board, board of adjustment, the administrator, and your technical review committee. And then it outlines for each one of those, the responsibilities, the organization and membership, their powers and duties, conflicts of interest, and then their other requirements, as I said, mentioned tasks and duties. And then section three, for those of you who could get through section three, it is definitely, excuse me, the longest ordinance, or the longest section in the ordinance? Excuse me, sorry. So this goes through each one of the development processes, and for each section, or each development process, you'll have one of these flow charts, which will explain where it goes. So it'll come in for a pre-submital conference, you know, who will get the application, there'll be a completeness review, who reviews it, and then who approves it? Totally losing the voice, sorry. Okay, hopefully. All right, so the new sections in the zoning ordinance that I wanted to kind of cover. But before I do that, any questions? Were there any questions when you were reviewing it, something that didn't make sense, comments, anything on so far? Okay, people have read it, right?
You did get the comments we made in the site, in the share panel? Okay.
Yeah, now, we haven't gone through, I'll admit, we have not gone through all of them, because we're trying to make sure that we get just about everybody's comments, so that it's not like making one person's comments, then going back the next day and making another person's comments. We want to wait till we get the majority of comments. So I think at this point, through one through three, we've gotten a lot of comments, but I just want to make sure that everybody had the opportunity before, again, we go through and start doing it. Because what we're going to do is we're going to go through, change or consolidate some of those comments, especially if it's obviously anything spelling, or, you know, we actually made an error, we'll change those, obviously. But if there's something like a policy that we're going to discuss, the next step is for us to take all of those comments and all of those questions that are like policy changes that we want to talk about, and then we're going to bring that before you, and you'll have a whole list of questions that we're going to kind of like sort out. So that's kind of like the next step.
Okay, so we haven't gotten that far, where you've actually taken the comments?
Correct, correct. We wanted to introduce.
We're just going over.
We wanted to introduce to you all of the sections, and then while you're reviewing these next set of sets, we're going to go back and do one through three.
Okay, that's what I was saying, there was a way to make sure that those were addressed or?
Yes, yeah, and the next time you see me, or the next time that Amy puts out a report, you'll have like a list of all those questions and comments, because we want to like make sure that everything is kind of done in agreeance. And then, more importantly, when this goes before town council, we want to also make sure that they're on board with some of the policy changes and things, because obviously, it's up to them to actually approve and enforce. Okay, so the new sections that we're going to talk about tonight are chapter six or section six. So the biggest, I say the biggest, because it's probably the thing that is new, is this creation of resource conservation areas, and this includes floodplain, wetlands, and items like that, that are go, it's basically any water resources that are found on a lot or on a sub, you know, on a subdivided site, that will be excluded from the minimum lot area. So if you're building a house, and you're required to have 10,000 square feet, but your lot is only 2,000, or is 12,000 square feet, and you have 2,000 that's in wetlands, you can still build on that lot, because you meet the minimum lot size of 10,000. But if you have 3,000 square feet of wetlands or water resources, you would not be able to build on that lot. So we're, that's what we're going to have, so this is going to be, it's just not say form, it should be from minimum lot area.
Is that different from what's currently in the zoning now?
Yes and no. So what is, what's real, in reality, you're not supposed to build on wetlands. I mean, there's really, unless you're going to get Army Corps of Engineers to change your designation, or you do a wetlands sort of mitigation of some sort, you can't really build there anyway. So there's nothing new that's really being taken out of it. What's new is that we're saying your minimum lot size can't have that on there.
Do we have lots that are 10,000, but are built on with less than?
So this would, yes, we have lots that are, have a small amount of upland, so we're subdividing new stuff to meet that minimum lot size. The minimum upland area basically would have to meet the minimum lot size requirement. The marsh that you're selling them is just that marsh that does not count towards your lot size in this. And there is in, currently in there, and we'll have to look, that says if you meet everything else, if your lot size is too small, but you can stay within the setbacks and you meet everything else, currently, you could still build on those lots, but anything moving forward with new, we would have, when they were split out initially, we would make sure that the upland area met that, so that that wasn't.
That was created legally.
It's kind of a new definition of what the upland encompasses, kind of.
Always there vaguely, it's just stronger now.
Who determines where that is?
When they're subdividing it, they have to do all the environmental on it. So that, so if like, if we have a subdivision, and this lot has some wetlands, they would have to, for that particular lot, say upland is this, wetland is this, total is this. And then, you know, on the other ones that have no wetlands, it would just be, I'll meet the minimum lot size requirement, and then we just have to do those particular ones.
Okay. And basically, what we've done on this one is, again, this chapter is really accommodate, it's just taking all of the environmental resource regulations that refer to CAMA permits, DEQ, your soil erosion and sedimentation control permits, floodplain, and flood damage protection, shoreline stabilization, and we've moved all of them basically into one section. So you can really just go into one place and look for it. The only thing that's not in here that is environmental protection, that we're going to be talking about in a little bit, is tree preservation. We've put that into design standards, because we kept that with landscaping, because we felt that that was close enough to the landscaping, that we kept it in that, a different chapter. But basically, this is going to have all of those sections. The stormwater, we know that we have to make some edits to that, to address some current things that are in your current ordinance. So if you see something missing in section six, we do know there are some edits coming that, with that, and also because the town is going to be implementing their own stormwater ordinance, so we will rewrite the section to reflect that new ordinance that will be coming online shortly. Okay, any questions there?
Is that the same, or about fill, like springy and fill? Is that covered here?
Field is currently in the coastal forest overlay district, and we would need to probably look at putting it potentially in the environmental.
Okay.
Because typically, our field concerns have been in the coastal forest overlay district, so we had put it in there while we're working through this process.
Okay. Section eight was one of the fun ones to work on, and we're still in the process of working on this. A big thanks to Scott for who is taking the time to go through this with us, and really work through signs to make sure that these are accurate, and really up to date to address the needs and wants of the town. So basically, it was a complete overhaul, and I wouldn't say overhaul, because we tried to keep as much of the regulation as possible, but what we did overhaul was how it looks. So there is a definition, example, and sketchup of each one of your sign types, just like you see here. This is an awning sign, so that's what an awning sign looks like in reality, and then on the right, how that would, you know, could otherwise portray. Basically, again, each type of sign, we have wall signs, and we have projecting signs, there's sandwich signs, all those types. Permitted signs are listed by zoning district into a four, into a chart, and then we also have, like I said, the buildings, the signs are classified either as a building sign or as a freestanding sign. Another chart we added in actually speaks to, and again, you're not going to be able to read this on the right-hand side there, but this is basically a chart that goes in, and it separates it out by your zoning districts. So the top one is your residential zoning districts, and then the middle and bottom one are signs, and how they're permitted in each one of your commercial or non-residential zoning districts. These provisions are also then, we have a section in there that talks to specific types of signs, which are electronic changeable signs. Those are only allowed in certain zoning districts, and they're very heavily regulated, and then also signs that are viewed from the water. Those are signs that are currently in your ordinance today. We also talk about temporary signs, prohibited signs, and non-conforming signs, and what happens with a non-conforming sign. There's also a section on maintenance enforcement and sign removal. And then based on the feedback that we got from staff, we are taking a more in-depth look at those temporary signs. Again, just very hard to regulate a temporary sign, and we're trying to make it mostly enforceable. And so that's why we're going to take a look at that again. It's not what is allowed or when it's allowed, it's really just how do you enforce it? Because there is a desire for temporary signs, and that's one of the things that we probably will discuss a little bit more tonight. I would really like to get some feedback on temporary signs, for those of you who own businesses, or have, you know, traveled to businesses. Are you actually stopping at a store because of a temporary sign? And what kind of signs do you consider offensive? And what kind of signs would you like to see? And how long do you feel it's a, you know, necessity to have a sign out? Because, you know, different towns regulate it different ways, whether it's out for a six-month period, or it's out for a two-week period, those types of things. And we, again, just want to make sure that it's enforceable. All right, so I'm going to take a little bit of a break here, again, because we are going to talk about then, like, things that are upcoming. Sorry, again, going the wrong way. But going back to the signs, did anybody have any questions or comments on signs? What are your thoughts on temporary signs? What are your thoughts on temporary signs? Is there-
I, I personally like temporary signs, I'm, I'm a shopper, based on, sometimes signage, we get so used to seeing the same stores, that we look past them over time, and so, I think businesses should definitely be allowed to have a temporary sign. Obviously, a temporary sign isn't year-round, but maybe, you know, consecutively, how many days in a row, they can put it out, and then how, a gap of time, possibly would be an idea.
Yeah, a typical sign, uh, how we've, how we've written it before, we've, or, I guess the most popular is usually like, four times a year, you can have a sign for up to four weeks, and then you have to have it down for, you know, another eight to twelve weeks, and then you can put it up again for another two to three weeks, something like that. You're only allowed one grand opening sign, ever, um, because, you know, technically, you only had, supposed to have one grand opening, but there's things like that, so we could write it, really kinda however you want, um, like I said, we're gonna work with Scott to kinda make sure that that is written, um, so that it's enforceable.
Talking about like, like a sale sign, or something like-
You know, like a flag that says, you know, stop here, or, you know, um, but, we're trying to avoid the, um, Michelin, the, the wavy mans, we're trying to avoid those, um, so that's a prohibited sign, um, but it'll probably be like, a flag or a pennant, and they're also, you know, you have to consider safety, and also visibility, um, you don't wanna be a hindrance to pedestrians, or drivers, in any sort of, you know, massive distraction. Also, again, definitely don't wanna tie anything to a tree, or, um, a pole, that's not, uh, or, or is an existing street sign, or things like that, so, we just have to be cognizant of what those signs are, and how long those are up. So, if anybody has some more feedback on that, I'd love to hear that.
It's like, we have like, a sandwich board sign, like a folding sign, that we just put out during the day, that says, come look, whatever, so is that considered-
That's a permitted sign, so you'll actually get a permit, and you'll be able to have that up every day.
Like, we just take it off.
So we're not supposed to do that?
No, you can do that. No, that's, that's-
You have it right against the store.
Yeah, it's right next to the sidewalk, it's not out in the street. Okay, but that's, but some people do, so is that, if it was out closer to the road, would that be considered as a permit?
I don't know, we haven't, we're, right now, that's written that, a sandwich, a sandwich board sign, is a permitted sign type, so you're allowed to have that in certain districts, and you would have it in front of your store. I don't know about having it out on the street, we haven't talked about that.
I saw, I thought, and you're, where you have yours in particular, yes, you're fine.
Yeah.
Um, but you're also in, in a strip that holds about thirty, some people in it, um, so there are some differences in regulations between the single lot, with one person on a single lot, versus that, because we don't want thirty-seven sandwich boards-
Right.
-lined up on the front, so that, that's a lot of what, kind of, what we're having to look at, and how do we enforce that? Because, we don't have time to go around, and be like, okay, she put her sign up on June first, you know, I mean, that's like, six hundred signs, and then, every day, ride around and see who's supposed to go down, and, and regulating it, so trying to figure out, how to allow some of those, um, signs, and not make it a regulation nightmare, is what we're working on, and also, you know, one thought was, maybe you want them out more during the summer, because the tourists are here, right? And you're drawing attention to that, but the tourists are probably already coming, so maybe you want them out more during the winter, when other people, you know, so that people know you're actually open back there, where they might think, oh, they're not open, it's the winter, I mean, I know that's not as normal as it used to be, but they, we do still have stores out here that are closed for the winter, um, so maybe you want your two-month period, in January and February, because you want to try to draw people in, so kinda trying to figure that out is what we've been talking through. You're thinking of signing sign right now?
So you were saying, you were looking at going on four weeks at a time, four times a year, did I hear you?
Not sure exactly, I mean, we're kinda, like I said, we were, just wanted to have a discussion about it, like, what seems reasonable? I, I, I don't own a business, so I don't know, uh, and, and I certainly don't live here, so I wanted, again, not my call, I just, what, that's something we see typical, um, that, no more than four weeks at a time, um, it's usually two to three, uh, and it's usually, again, about probably like, every quarter, allowed a temporary sign, um, and that's, I think, what we were kinda leaning towards, but if there's a preference, again, that's what I'd love to hear.
Like Amy said, though, how do you enforce that? Does Scott ride around and write down every sign he sees, every day of the week, and that's a lot of-
They're supposed to come in and get a permit.
Oh, even for the temporary?
That, well, that's, that's, that's how you best enforce it, right?
Okay.
Or, you don't enforce it, but if you've seen it up for a month, and it's only supposed to be up for two-
Apparently, temporary signs are not permitted.
No, I don't think so.
I think-
Certain combinations thereof, there is some, some language in there, that certain combinations thereof, it's gray, and it contradicts itself, um, so the enforcement of it has not been black and white, less whole-
Maybe temporary signs should be permitted, then.
That's what we're leaning towards.
So there's one place where it says you can have a feather sl- sign, and then it's somewhere else in the ordinance, where it says, all temporary signs are prohibited. So, what we've kind of gone with is, you can have one feather flag, because up here, it says you can have one, and down here, it says none, so that's-
Currently, for how long? What's the duration, currently?
It depends on where you're at in the ordinance, so that is why Scott spent an hour, hour and a half the other day, trying to kinda work through this, to make sure that what we're saying down here, isn't contradicting what we're saying down, up here, so that we can start fairly enforcing that across the board, and clearly enforcing it. At one time, there was talk of a permit, at one time, there was talk of not doing a permit, so there's been a lot of moving parts on this one.
We've even talked about just a registration, where you go online, you say, I'm gonna have a temporary sign up for three weeks, it goes, um, into the GIS system, and is tagged with your property, or your, you know, the business, and then, you're not eligible to do it again for another, you know, six weeks or so.
You might put something in viewpoint, where you sign up for all your other permits, it's free, you're just basically registering it, and then I can run a report that says, all of the, these are the only people that are allowed to have temporary signs on July seventh, and if I ride around and see a bunch of, then they would get it, so, working that out to make it enforceable is-
Seems like the registration needs to be on the business owner's part, so Scott's not riding around.
You would register for it, I would just, yeah, I would just run the report, yes, it's-
And we wanna make it business-friendly, right? It's not try, we're not trying to be business-unfriendly, but we just wanna also provide, not overkill, right?
It's useless, if you can't enforce it, I mean, what's the point?
Right, right, exactly.
Putting it in there, can't enforce it.
Correct.
I think we have to take, also, the town's uniqueness, is, it, we're not Cary, we're not a lot of towns where, y- you just have a lot of your local residents who go out and shop, and they see talent, your signs every day, we have fifty thousand unique visitors that visit the island every week, during a five-month span, or four-and-a-half-month span, so, where we allow signs for four weeks, they're gonna lose out on two hundred thousand potential visitors for the next four weeks.
Right, well, that's, yeah, that's why we're asking, like-
We have to consider that, as far as for the businesses, to allow them to, because a lot of them really rely on those four-and-a-half, five months to survive for the entire year, so we don't wanna hinder that either, so we don't wanna over-regulate, and really handcuff our businesses, more than, you know, some of the policies that we've done, and, you know, so, I, I, we definitely have to consider the uniqueness of the town versus a normal town, that's not tourist-driven, so we have to, I think, have some more flexibility for business owners, to be able to advertise more, you know, even if it's just a seasonal permit, versus something where, you know, in the off-season, you know, maybe dial it back somewhere, dial it back completely, but allow them their chance to make money while the tourists are here.
And remember, this is, again, just temporary signs, this does not affect, this doesn't affect their building signs, or their, you know, a monument sign out front, or anything like that, this is really just those temporary signs, but yes, those are really good points. What, again, we talked about registering, um, the other thing that comes up, and I, I forget, I think they're called slash signs, like the little twenty-four by thirty-six, um, corrugated, um, plastic signs, that, like, you know, baseball registration, um, you know, those are sort of a, like, a different, I mean, I think they're a different animal, um, those typically get put up in the right-of-way, and they're not supposed to be there, so they get taken down. We're looking at, like, how do you regulate those, because again, we don't regulate content, that was, if you're not aware, there was a really big, uh, law case about, you know, advertising on signs, um, that there was, the slash signs came into effect, but what we wanna talk about is, like, i- if the, if the little league is, is gonna be putting up those signs, on people's property, you know, like, team, you know, coaches', uh, yards, maybe, the little league comes in and says, hey, we've got, you know, we're gonna put up twenty-five of these, and again, somehow, register it, or just so that we know that it's going up, um, obviously not, and, just so they, it's more of an edu-, I feel like signage is much more of an education than it is of really anybody doing anything blatantly intentionally wrong, I think it's just that, a lot of people just aren't aware of what those regulations are, and that where the right-of-way ends, and where private property starts, and those types of things, so we really just wanna make sure that, again, it's enforceable, it's business-friendly, and that it makes sense, um, both for, uh, the public and for the staff.
I'm just going back to, like, where, like, that little strip, if you have a big strip mall, and you have thirty, so does that mean, they can all register and put thirty flags out on the, on the road front at the same time?
Right, right now, no, because there's a difference between, it's either up to two, or up to three, can have one, I think it's one per, once you get above that two or three threshold, it goes to two per parcel.
Two per parcel?
So, then-
Not per business?
No, so then, it's, you know, me fighting with price over who gets to put out the sign this week, is it my sign, or is it Price's, or is it Ally's, or, you know, who gets, who gets those two signs this week, and it becomes a internal management issue that the town is out of, we just count two.
Well, I just remember back when we were, had the, uh, we had the lighted signs, and we kinda, in, in the planning board, we kinda went over, bent over backwards, trying to like, figure out a way to allow some of those signs, but then when we, when it kinda moved towards the town council, they kind of all of a sudden were like, eligible, it would be one big lighted sign, completely down the whole stretch, coming into fifty, so they pretty much can't, you know, kinda cap, just kinda threw that off to the side, so I kinda, I mean, I under, I mean, I understand what, uh, Daniel's saying, is like, we wanna be able to provide these things, but, at some point, the way we're set up, it, you might just be going down, you know, flags everywhere, you know, the main strip coming in here, like, because we are, it's different than that way, as far as the temporary signs, so I just, just caution about what it's gonna look like when you're driving down fifty, because, 'cause I, I think as a planning board, we kinda were like, pro-business, we wanted to kind of bend over backwards to give the person what he wanted, but then when we kinda stepped back, and you looked at the big picture, it was like, oh, it would be a lighted, it would be, um, a lighted sign on every business going down this carway, and, and then that, and then that would create another issue, as far as like, what kinda town do we wanna, what do we wanna see people when they're coming in, do they wanna see flags, like, stretched down the whole thing, or are we gonna see, you know?
And a lot of those signs may just say, open. Do we need seventeen open signs?
Right, and that, that, I think that's-
Or can we have one feather flag that says, open, for the whole shop, instead of everybody having their own, so that's another part of it, is-
Caution about like, what we want it to look like on the big picture, I know we wanna help the people out, but at the same time, I think it helps everybody out, what it looks like coming in to the, uh, to the town, and I think that's what we got, when we had the, uh, lighted signs, and the scrolling signs, kinda-
We also have a lot more wind out here than the majority of towns in North Carolina, so our feather flags don't last nearly as long, our stick-in-the-ground signs are blowing around, you know, all the time.
Actually, down quarter, rolling in fifty.
Yeah, so there's a lot of maintenance issues, um, with those signs, and then blowing down into the sidewalks, and not being maintained, so, as much as the temporary signs may be helpful, they're not being maintained, and they're creating public health hazards for us, um, with tripping hazards, and getting stuck, like, actually hitting bicyclists when they're riding by, and things like that, so we really have to think about that as well, when we're looking at it.
What about, um, signs for properties, residential properties, that are having work done, where contractors are putting signs out, what's the rules for that?
So that is, if you are onsite working, while you're working, it's fine, but you can't continue to have it, it becomes an off-site sign, once you kinda quit working. So if we ride by, and we see your truck there, and you've got signs out there, that's fine, um, but if we ride by for three weeks, and we don't ever see you there, then that's an off-site sign, and it's, it's not fine. Um, a lot of that, too, is if, with work that has a permit, then your temporary sign is associated with that permit, once that permit is over, then you're expected to remove it within-
Is that all specified, and?
Some of it is, yes, but it, and it may need to be hammered out additionally, but there is for, um, like, new construction, and then-
Or sale signs are also another one of those, like, real estate signs.
That's, that's currently a, was a completely separate, like, real estate signs are separate, construction signs would be, um, but theoretically, if I'm pressure washing your house, and it takes me three hours to pressure wash it, I'm not gonna be allowed to have my sign there for six weeks.
Okay, any other questions on signs, or discussion on signs? All right. Okay, so we're gonna talk zoning, um, so, the zoning districts, as is, are, um, a little, and I, and I use the word loosely, but a little chaotic, just because, they're kind of, I don't wanna say the word, they're not intuitive, um, some of them are, some of them are not, um, and we're just talking about, right now, changing the names of some of them, and trying to maybe possibly group some of them together, um, hopefully you can read all this, but, basically, what we're thinking is that the majority of the town is gonna stay the same, that very few areas are actually gonna get rezoned, um, we would leave that up to the town, to kinda do that after the zoning ordinance gets written, um, but there are some areas that may get changed with this, um, update. The intent of the areas that we would rezone was to be more in line with the character of the area, an example of that is, um, changing some of the area of C1, to, um, an island re, we call it, um, ITC, I, um, Island Town Center, and then changing some of the remaining C1, uh, properties to neighborhood business, that are more surrounded by the, uh, residential areas. Um, and then another one is possibly changing MHS to an R3, so that no new manufactured homes would be permitted on the island, um, except those being replaced in existing parks. These are some of the discussions that we've been having, um, basically, to make sure that the, the changes that would happen would be based on character of the town, and then on health, safety, and welfare issues. There's some discussion on a new industrial district, and I'm just gonna explain this briefly, um, the industrial district is to talk, um, right now, industrial uses are allowed in your, um, your business district, as you come, um, on fifty, as you come off of, cross over seventeen, and you're coming over the islet, to get over the bridge, that whole area, um, now allows this massive mixture of uses, it ranges from a, a gas station to, really, any manufacturing facility, and then down to, you know, retail shops, and the idea here is to take out those industrial uses, and assign them to an industrial district. Now, the industrial district, right now, there really isn't a place in town where we feel industrial districts are really warranted, this is a much more residential community, much more service commercial, but, industrial uses have a place, such as, um, you know, a self-storage, or maybe a distribution center, or, you, you know, even, um, you know, facility that's going to sell, uh, propane tanks, and things like that. So what we, what we're considering is having an industrial district that is not assigned anywhere on the map, and then these, what would happen is that, if a property wanted to come in and do an industrial use, they would rezone to industrial, or they'd have to rezone to industrial, and most likely, we're gonna see these properties out, we think, on seventeen, um, further away from the center of town, as they're in the county, so when they come into the town through annexation, they have to get rezoned anyway, um, so the thought is that they could rezone to the industrial, and then that keeps the industrial uses out on the major highways, where there's adequate transportation and utilities. So that's just one of the thoughts of, something a little bit different, so you're gonna see that industrial not having a previous district, I mean, technically, it's in the G3, but, or in the, uh, B3, B, C3, C3, um, but we're gonna move it, um, to its own district. I just wanna warn you, this is not anything that's written in stone, we are still just considering it, but the reason that we wanna present it tonight, and discuss it with you, is because we can't move ahead with the land use, uh, table, until we solidify these districts. So we kinda wanted to talk about, what districts do you feel are necessary, which ones do you, you know, talk about some questions, Amy has a printout, or we, we'll send you at, right after this meeting, we have a list of like, what the descriptions are of each one of these zoning districts, like, what's, not what's allowed, but kinda like, the general, um, character of what that district would look like, what kind of uses would be allowed, would it have utilities, or would it be on, uh, septic, um, would, you know, those types of things, and then- And then it's also going to talk about what was the former district? So you'll see what it was previously and what we're thinking of moving to.
This becoming more common in new areas? I'm not familiar with anything on the right column as far as the R2, R3. Like how, what size is an R3 lot?
It's going to be five thousand square feet. The reason that we're moving away from that is because there's different uses in it.
Than the R5?
Right, so it's not just commer-, it's not just single-family residential because that's the only one that's five thousand square feet. Other uses that are allowed in the R5 are different. So, yeah, we're trying to get away from naming it kind of like by the single fam- because there is a big movement also, and moving forward, say you wanted to allow townhomes in any district. I, I don't think that's a desire, but just to use that as an example. A townhome lot is probably, max you're going to see is like twenty-four hundred square feet. So if you're going to have that as a permitted use, it really doesn't make sense to have that as a permitted use in a five thousand square foot, you know, to call it C5, five thousand square feet. Because it's a permitted use and that's going to be a smaller lot size. So we're just trying to get away from calling it by that single family because single-family lots are not everything that's allowed in that district. So that's, that's why that, but those are exactly the same. Like, we're not planning to change the R15, we're just going to change the name to R1. And the R10, we're not planning to change that. There's nothing changing in any of those. Where there are some changes and possibly in the dimensional standards in the R, we talked about in the, right now in the C1, Commercial 1, we were talking about going to the Island Town Center. Right now, there's no side setbacks in the Island Town Center. So there was some discussion that potentially anything new that went in there or anything that was a tear-down and rebuild might have to have a side setback. We also talked about, in the neighborhood business, right now, some of them also don't have setbacks or they have reduced setbacks. But we're talking about kind of making them consistent with the NB and C1, making those a little bit closer together and making them very similar in terms of the setbacks on those lots. But everything else really kind of would stay similar to the same as existing currently. The only other discussion too was taking that cluster multifamily, which really is kind of right now just one development, but really developed with five thousand square foot lots. We're kind of talking about just folding that into the R3. And the R3M is basically the same, R3. And R3M, it's just that R3M is allowing the different types of homes. R3 allows for single-family and duplexes. And then I think R3M, we said, would allow for townhomes and multifamily with the allowance of a conditional district.
And what's the reasoning behind the Island Town Center getting rid of the setbacks or move, or having some setbacks?
So, what they were, so Amy was explaining this a little bit earlier. So what had happened is that there were no setbacks. So I guess if you're familiar with like a, a, a regular downtown, like a, like on, like off-island, like a, a main street downtown, usually all the buildings are kind of touching, you know, they're all things. But there's like an alley or some sort of access, access to the back of the properties. But what's happened in, on the island is that those properties have been built with no side setbacks. So property owners cannot, or emergency vehicles cannot access the rear of the property. So that those buildings have either gaps back there or there's just, you know, emergency access, access basically. Maintenance, we, we also, I mean, there's, you know, building code would require anything that that's close to have firewall or have sprinklers. So, you know, there will be some of that too moving forward. One of the things too that I'm not sure how much you've been seeing as a planning board, but conditional zoning, we are suggesting two different types of conditional zoning. One would be what you're typically seeing now would be a sort of adjustment from an existing zoning district. So just to use your current one, so say you have an R5 subdivision coming in and they wanted, you know, some special considerations, like wanted to reduce a buffer, but they're going to put in more street trees to reduce the buffer. In a R5 CZ, you can allow that, that, it's like those little changes that are beneficial to the town and beneficial to the applicant to allow some design standards, changes in design standards. And then the other one would be to remove the PUD district and then to sort of create this conditional district called a type two, which would be a PD CZ. And this is where the developer would come in and meet with the town and kind of develop brand-new standards for that specific site. So that would require a site plan to be coming in, would require sort of a document that would outline what the setbacks would be, what the building heights would be and everything like that. But it wouldn't be tied to any specific zoning district. So you kind of create your own, so that would be again a PD CZ. So again, just allowing again greater flexibility sort of on that thing of some innovative design. Might be a mixed use where you have commercial on the bottom and then you have retail, or, commercial retail on the bottom and either offices or residential up top. Sort of allows for that, you know, kind of mix of uses, whether it's in a building or on the site entirely. So allow for that. All right.
Is it, the Island Town Center, because of the word island, is, would be just for the island?
Right, and then we would change this fifty, again, we're taking those industrial uses out, and that fifty would become the Gateway Commercial. And part of the reason for doing that is that we create sort of these little pockets of character areas. And then those can have like, according to like your comprehensive plan and in line with that, you could do a, a small area plan, you could be eligible for grants to do sidewalk improvements, maybe street lighting, you know, create a tax district and do business grants and work with your Chamber of Commerce and all this. There's so many different types of things if you kind of create those, you know, specific areas rather than just calling it that. You can kind of have this like, again, a char-, we call it a character area. You know, create special design standards for those areas too. So it's sort of taking a step in that direction of really kind of classifying the areas by character.
As far as the Island Town Center area, what, what are the scenarios where a business, an existing business today would not be conforming if something were to happen?
So basically, all the businesses are-
Like, let's say, let's say something burns down and they want to rebuild right away, but their property doesn't meet the setback values that we install. Is there a potential for that business not to be able to rebuild?
Right now, I don't, I don't know what the, the ordinance right now, I think Amy said, is like within a year, you can go back to what's existing.
If something burns down and you actively work towards getting it back through permitting and whatnot, then you can build it back. If you sit on that property for like five years and you want to change it to something else, then you wouldn't be able to, you would have to keep the current standard.
No, I mean, as far as what the new, the new suggestions that we're looking at with the new setback standards, would there be any situation where the business couldn't build back? Existing business could not build back? Do we have any examples in town?
I mean, that would only be if we changed the uses. But we're not really intending to change the uses that are permitted in there. Where that might come into effect is in that GC or like the, the Gateway Commercial. If there is an industrial use there that, I, I don't, I haven't gone out and done a full business catalog of what is on there. But if there was, say, I, I can't even think, I don't know if there's any manufacturing use. I'll just use that as an example. If there's a manufacturing use out there that we would not want to see moving forward in town and we'd rather see like a commercial use there, that use becomes non-conforming, but not the building necessarily. So the setbacks affect more of a building non-conformity than a use non-conformity. So they should be able to build back with not an issue. They might just, if, the new, the way the new ordinance is written, I believe non-conformities, if it's completely destroyed, I do think they have to build back to the new standards. But they would still be able to use that use.
Okay.
And a lot of what's going to dictate that as well is the flood plane or the flood elevations. A lot of our older stuff isn't, may not meet flood elevation. And if you're destroyed, you have to come back to flood elevation. So when you start raising your building, your access changes and that changes how your building can be laid out. You may have to put in an elevator. You may have to figure, make your building smaller so that you can have your ramp come up. So that's going to be more of a overriding, it's going to kind of dictate how the building turns out more-
That's not anything we're writing.
Than what we're doing is now you're going to have to meet current building code, current, current flood, current building, those kinds of things.
And that's dictated by-
And those are completely separate from what we're talking about here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Again, you'll get a copy of what this is going to look like in more of a written-out form. We have sort of, you know, two sort of scenarios. This is the one we're kind of leaning towards a little bit more. The other scenario was putting, taking out that R3M and just creating an R4 and then all manufactured homes, manufactured home parks, all higher residential uses would just all go into R4. So that R4 is just a much broader allowance of uses. But we felt that having two sort of different of those higher-density residential districts would be beneficial. And just so you know, that the mixed-use district currently is a commercial district to encourage that mixed use. But it is being currently used, from what we've seen in our analysis, as being used as mostly a residential district. Most of the mixed-use districts don't have a ton of commercial in them. They're mostly, I think condominiums right now. So that mixed-use district is sort of what I feel is like a little bit underutilized and could be utilized for more residential and commercial. And then, so there was some talk of possibly moving those around. But right now, we feel very comfortable that the, this would meet the, meet the needs of staff in terms of implementation and understanding like that it's sort of like an intuitive thing and also renaming them like Island Town Center and Gateway Commercial, again, creating those character districts. But obviously, we want your feedback and input. So once we get you the, the narrative on this, we are asking for this one to be sort of a quick turnaround so that we can get chapter five to you. Because then chapter five is what we've talked about, which is coming up next, is, let's see if that goes, is the uses. And you'll remember last time we gave you a chart, you actually had a handout that was chapter five that talked about the uses. We want to update that chart. We've, we've worked on it, but it doesn't have the new names yet. So that's why we're kind of like presenting four and being heavy in the zoning districts. What we want to do is then take chapter five, change the chart so that we can put the new districts. But we want to know what are some of those uses that you are like, we absolutely do not want this on the island or we absolutely want this mainland or what? We also want to know, when you're looking at that chart, you're going to have those letters, P, P, P being permitted, permitted with standards is PS. SUP is by a special use permit, which again is a quasi-judicial proceeding. CZ, conditional zoning. And then if it's blank, it's not permitted. But we want to kind of just really instill in you to be, you know, the creators of these districts and like, tell us what you feel is right to be there. And if something, there are no standards for a certain, we have the, all the uses that are going to be in that table that have PS will have standards attached to them. So you've seen the chart, but you haven't seen what those standards are. And we want to give you those next, so you have a chance to look at them and say, hey, you know what? This needs more teeth or hey, this doesn't have, this has way too much. Why are you over-regulating this? You know, because maybe in another community, we saw that. Somebody mentioned jokingly before chickens. And I don't know if I've ever told you my really horror story with the zoning ordinance and chickens, but I chose not to, hope to ever, ever relive another zoning ordinance with chickens. But we had, we got to our public hearing and I had thirty-six people in the audience speaking as to why we were regulating chickens. So something that staff never caught and something that staff never thought would be an issue almost got the zoning ordinance completely denied because so many people came out to speak against, one, use section in a three-hundred-page document. So I don't want to ever get there again. But I would really, really encourage all of you to take a look at those uses and really, you know, read them and figure out what, like I said, what, you need more teeth, what doesn't. And maybe we have it permitted with standards and you don't even think it needs standards. It could be just something that's allowed. And just remember that any use that's in that table has to meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And if it's a subdivision, it has to meet all the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. These are standards that would be over and above specific to that use. So it's not going to, you know, it's not going to be for every use, it'll just be for those specific uses. Any comments, questions? I know that's kind of confusing without actually having that chart in front of you today. But you, it should be in that sharepoint, the draft one we provided with you earlier. It's not going to change too much. But again, we want to update it and you'll see that with the new headings for the zoning districts. Okay, and then here is the biggest chunk and we're, and we can talk about this ad nauseam. But there's going to be a lot of information in chapter seven. Chapter seven is the design standards. There is a lot that is covered in there. So this is just going to touch very briefly on what those requirements are. So open space is one of the newer ones. I think previously you had a percent, it's like a, a per acre or per unit acreage that gets donated or gets dedicated to open space. We're going to make it easy, we're just going to say it's ten percent of the entire property that gets dedicated for open space. Fifty percent of that ten percent has to be recreation, it can be passive or active.
It's ground area.
Yes, sir. So that ordinance gives a lot of examples and a lot of hand-holding to say, what is recreation? What can be counted? We want it to be at least fifty feet wide, so we're not getting little strips of land behind people's houses that's not accessible to anyone. We want it to be contiguous if possible so that it can actually, you know, be a greenway or walk. Speaking of greenway, going into the next section, and East Coast Greenway Plan was just recently adopted. What we're looking to now is having the town adopt, in that plan, there were like three or four options as to where the greenway could go. And what we're trying to do is really get that land and those improvements built. So the idea is here that once that land is dedicated or once that plan is adopted and the alignment, that final alignment is approved by the town, then we can go forward with some acquisition into right-of-way and to actually go after grant money to get that greenway actually constructed. This is, this is not unique to Surf City, this is done throughout the state. If there is a greenway plan that is adopted, it is very typical to allow or require landowners that are along there to dedicate the right-of-way to build a greenway. It's seen as a, for, it's usually in the DOT right-of-way. And it really is seen as a pedestrian and commuting pattern. So we're looking to get, to use that to get people where they want to go. So that's something that is currently new. And if that mapping is done prior to the zoning ordinance, we will put this in the zoning ordinance. If not, this is something that will be done in the future. But we will reserve a section in chapter seven for the wording for this section. Tree preservation, something new. It's not new for the coastal forest overlay, but if, this would be new for the rest of the area of the town. Basically, we're going to designate a significant tree. Right now, the only one that we have written in there is a live oak over twelve inches. But we can really work with any type of tree and a size designation that you want and then add that to the list. What that would require is that if a tree is removed in a buffer area that is normally going to be required to have trees in it anyway, then you're going to have to replace those trees at an inch-for-inch basis. And then there's, there's staggered ratios for, based on the size of the original tree. All trees over forty-eight inches must be approved for, before removal. And if they are being replaced, that should be at a four-to-one ratio. I'm so sorry.
It was the forty-eight inches.
Sorry, hold on. I'll be right back, hold on.
Scared her off.
Hey, all y'all, this is live on TV, so let's not have a ton of side conversations. This is live on TV, let's not have a lot of side conversations, let's wait for her to get back.
Apologies.
I don't know if you have any forty-eight inch trees right now, but that's a four-foot wide tree.
So we, this was a very kind of vague, general stab at it. So Karen and I had some conversations about maybe adding some more things or changing some things. This wouldn't change the coastal forest overlay district. So if the coastal forest overlay district remained, you know, at what it was with the stricter regulations, those would remain on the island, this would be in addition off-island. So this was just kind of a starting point to get us started. And then we need to think about, you know, what's the common tree size here that we would want to save? Are there particular trees that we like better than other tree? Not like better, but that we feel are more significant to keep? Like, is a pine tree as important as a live oak, as a, I don't know, whatever other tree we have? But kind of going through that, this was just to get us started talking.
Sorry about that. And that's what it's intended. We wanted to get, again, this isn't written yet, well, it's written, but it's in draft form. We really wanted to get your feedback to see where we can go with this. Is, is, has anybody seen a forty-eight inch live oak on the island? Probably not. But if we can go in that direction of terms of identifying what trees are important. And again, like Amy said, what is, what are you interested in preserving?
As far as the, when it says forty-eight inch, is there any way to be more specific when, when the ordinance is written to say wide and not circumference? Because people could look at it two different ways and-
It's diameter or breast height, it's written DBH, so that's a caliber inches at four and a half feet off the ground, and that's defined in the ordinance.
Now, the forty-eight inches, where it says all trees would be all trees, not just the live oak?
No, just the live oaks. All li, all signi, it should say all significant trees over forty-eight inches.
Maybe we should change that verbiage.
Yeah, it, in the ordinance it does, it's just, this was just for the slide, but yes. It's, tree preservation is only applicable to significant trees.
Right now, we only have live oaks as-
Correct, yeah, again, we just started this, this came out of, you know, sites being clear-cut and not, you know, not being, trying to prevent that from what is left of the canopy here. So we wanted to really try to work towards preserving what that, you know, what that is, so. Sorry, allergy medicine is wearing off, so I totally apologize.
The tree preservation's for all zoning, it's not specific to residential or anything, it's commercial as well.
Correct. I don't think there's any, is there, is there any commercial properties right now that would be applicable to that?
I mean, the island, you know, it's the island in a hole right now with the CFOD. This would be looking at everything more off-island. I don't feel like we're gonna take away the CFOD and be like, oh, we're just gonna go with this. This needs to be tweaked, it's just kind of a, a starting, a starting point. But it does get developers looking at going out and actually doing the tree surveys and going, oh, well, if I realigned my parking this way, I could save, you know, this live oak or, or whatnot. Like, the Publix in Porter's Neck, that one, there are, there were significant trees on that, and that's why part of the islands and the parking were put in certain places. Now, you know, maybe the building couldn't be, so they ended up planting something back. But they, the engineers worked a little bit harder to design around the natural elements because they were required trees.
We did put into the ordinance, again, into the draft, four different incentives to save the trees so that if you're saving the tree, you're not getting penalized for your setbacks. So setbacks can be reduced up to fifty percent. Parking can be reduced if you're saving a tree near a parking space. If you lose a parking space, that's okay, you're not gonna get penalized because you're not providing enough parking. There's also an allowance for buffers that if you have a, you know, normally a buffer is like a solid ten feet or twenty feet along a property line. This would allow you to, you know, vary the width of the buffer to go around a tree. So if you're providing the drip zone or the, the critical root zone of a tree of that size, say, you know, is fifty feet, your buffer in that area might be fifty feet, but then you go down to like ten feet for the rest of the property. Just to allow some of those things that you're not gonna get penalized because you're trying to save a tree. We're really trying to incentivize the saving of the trees there. And again, this is just in draft form. As Amy said, mentioned, this literally was just being worked on this week. So if you have any suggestions on it, please let us know. It's, it's really, again, just in the beginning sections of that. And again, saving the trees and the mitigation is just for the trees that are in the buffer or that would normally have to be preserved anyway, or should be preserved anyway. And then it's really just that, those massive trees that, you know, we're trying to really try hard to save. Because for those of you who aren't familiar, like the, the benefit of a large tree of that size is, you know, irreplaceable when you're, even if you're trying to replace it with, you know, the same number of caliber inches in two-inch trees, you're still, it's not, the, you're never gonna replace the benefit of that tree. So in landscaping section, this is, it includes standards for buffers for the lot landscaping, parking lot landscaping, screening fences and berms. One question I did have for you, buffers right now are very limited in the town in terms of what you buffer from other uses. We're used to seeing buffer ordinances written that buffers are differentiate in width and intensity in terms of what is planted based on what it is, what it is planted next to. So if you have a single-family use next to an industrial, that is obviously gonna be your widest and thickest or more, most dense buffer. And then it varies so that if you have a commercial property to an industrial property, you might just have like a small row of shrubs. And then in most districts, if you have like a commercial next to a commercial, there is no buffer because you're just having commercial next to commercial. Are there any feelings on how that gets regulated? Are there air situations where you don't wanna see a buffer? Another question is, do you wanna buffer perimeter zoning district, like zoning district to zoning district? Or do you wanna buffer use to use? So like a commercial use to a residential use? Or is it just a zoning district? So it would be like, if you're only on the buffer of that zoning district to another zoning district? Any thoughts?
I think uses.
Number of places in the whole part of town where we got residential structures and commercial zoned areas, which one do you pick?
So, and like in mixed use, it allows both commercial and residential. So you may have some of those older houses and a commercial use comes in beside it. Or you may have an older commercial use and a new residential comes in beside it. So I would say that you would put the buffer on the use that is coming in. They would create-
Correct.
So if I have an old, if I come in beside an existing commercial and I'm residential, then I should buffer my own property and not complain about my neighbor. And if I'm a new commercial coming into a residential, I should buffer my property. Would be my thought on it, is that it's a use buffer just because we have commercial and residential kind of mixed in a few different zonings right now.
Sorry, did we not go to, oh, sorry, so sorry. Thank you. I lost some oxygen in that whole episode there. So the, one of the things that we also talk about are varying widths. I know that property here is at an absolute premium, so we don't wanna require a lot of width eaten up by buffers, right? Because obviously, that's a pricey and pricey cost thing there. So the idea then would be to plant it greater. What are the thoughts on fences or berms? Yes, no? Certain situations?
I would say certain situations, on the island, you're all gonna be on piles, potentially. So fence, and the landscape buffer's not really gonna, gonna do much either. So there, it's, in the more commercial districts up against a residential, it's, it's kind of, to me, it's kind of nice to have a fence because then I don't have to worry about the vegetation dying or it getting too size. Where if I use some kind of fence that's, that blocks, I, I'm not having to worry about that as much. But that's just my opinion.
I agree, I, I think, I think that's a better use of fence because we have that, I mean, just from our experience at Daddy Max, we had a little issue with our residential neighbors, but once we put a fence in, it kind of eliminated. Even though, in that way, it just kind of eliminated that, any kind of visual or any kind of different thing going in there, as opposed to trying to put some vegetation in there that was hard to maintain, you know, it's hard to maintain, you gotta keep it maintained.
And with outdoor dining, it can also be a good noise buffer-
Yeah.
-as well.
Well, and just, yeah, and just general, just a general site, you know, you have residential next to a commercial, so.
Especially with parking and, you know, lights coming through and everything.
Yeah.
Is there a requirement as far as like the aesthetics for if a commercial's going to put some sort of fencing up? Like, do you have to make sure that both sides look the same at least?
There can be.
Yeah, we usually say that the fence has to be like a stockade fence, so it's like on both sides, it's the exact same thing. Or that the, the finished side of the fence faces out.
So like, I know with the same thing, because I've lived like Triton, when they put the fence up between the commercial and the townhomes, the townhomes, you would say we got what they considered the ugly side of the fence.
Oh, that shouldn't, that shouldn't have happened.
But I think because there's a street and maybe parking on the other side of the fence as well for the commercial area, there was some-
The dumpsters are back there.
There's like gray area there, but like, but they did, they like, it just, it isn't as pretty on the side that's facing the residential. So I think if that's something that's gonna be allowed, we don't-
It's usually outs, the outside side.
Our fencing, our fencing ordinance says nothing about who gets the pretty side or who gets the ugly side. Like, there's, there's nothing in there.
Or at least to make sure that they're the same on either side, then-
Uniform, something uniform.
Well, the other thing that happens too is that a lot of people, some of the ordinance that we've reviewed have the plantings on the outside, you know, of the, facing the lower intensity use. And that's great and wonderful, but they put the fence right up on the property line. So no one can actually, you'd have to go on your neighbor's property to maintain the plantings that are on the other side of the fence. So the fence-
Or painting. Or painting.
Yeah, you can't paint the fence, yeah. So we always try to make sure that the fence is closest in and that if there is planting, that there's plenty of room to walk around and be, maintain the fence or the plantings.
Another item ought to be addressed in fencing is height. In hurricane-prone areas, we don't want a lot of windborne debris, but it's gotta be effective too.
And I know that there are some that we have missed, but our height limit is six foot. And we try to catch them when they're going in or to catch them. There are some that have been here longer than I've been here, so I don't really know the background on them. But our height limit is six fence, six foot. We do not require a fence permit, so everything that's built that doesn't match our ordinance, we end up having to find, or somebody calls on you pretty quickly, and then we go visit the site. But yeah, our height limit right now is six foot, and then we need, it needs to be where the air can move through it so that during the hurricane, it's not a wall that blows over quickly. And we may even want to consider some kind of foundation type. Like the post have, for a six-foot post, for a six-foot fence, the posts have to be a certain depth in the ground or something like that to add to it.
Something you can get permitted, like have to have them get permitted?
I'm not opposed to having them permitted.
Currently.
We don't permit them, but-
That would be helpful.
It would be, are you gonna come help me?
Chief Fence Inspector.
Chief Fence-
Fences make good neighbors.
I don't believe that.
Some of the other things in Section Seven, outdoor lighting, we heard a lot tonight about making sure that lighting, or we heard, I'm sorry, that the source of the light, light bulbs should not be seen, downward-facing, you know, internally lit, those types of signs are, types of lighting are preferred and that there is right now some glare that's occurring in certain properties. So we're gonna be looking at lighting a little bit closer. One of the things with lighting, which I find helpful, is that lighting can be put into your ordinance. Doesn't necessarily mean that your, you know, inspectors could be walking around with a light meter saying, oh, this property is over. But it does allow those situations where there is a nuisance and there are complaints about it, or that it's a hazard for traffic, that if you have it in the ordinance, it is something to fall back on. And sometimes it's not even in your zoning ordinance, sometimes that's in your code of ordinances so that it could be a police matter. So we'll talk about that and we'll put, you'll see those standards in Section Seven. Parking, there was a request from staff to have increased requirements for residential uses. Parking also will be very much in line with Chapter Five. So when you get that use table, we're gonna try and assign a parking ratio for each one of the uses in the use table. If there's other parking requirements that are over and above there, what we'll try to do is we try to put those parking regulations in the specific use standards. So if there's a use that requires more parking, like say there's an industrial use that requires more parking than another one, we won't just say that all industrial require this. If there's a specific one that requires, or we'll put that into the use section. Building design, oh, I keep spelling wrong. So it's not supposed to say tow family, it's supposed to say two-family. But we cannot, it's state statute, we cannot regulate anything that is subject to one and two, one and two-family building dwellings. That now includes triplexes and quadplexes. We cannot regulate any of those building design standards. But we can regulate anything that is multi-family and anything that is commercial or non-residential. So we've added some requirements for transparency, which is basically the number of windows and doors. We don't want it to be too high because obviously you're, you know, prone to hurricanes and high winds that we don't wanna have to have excessive boarding. But at the same time, we also wanna allow for light and safety types issues. We also talked about screening of mechanical equipment, and then it's gonna require the submission of architectural drawings for anything new that's gonna come in. And then we also talk about infill. And infill basically, if you're not familiar with that term, infill is basically anything that's in an established neighborhood that had, or on an established street. And we say a block face is about five hundred feet. So if you have a property that's in the middle and you take five hundred feet on either side of that property and you look at how far they're set back from the road or how tall they are, it doesn't matter what the zoning district says. If you have a complete street that's already built out, you can build to what your neighbors are. So you, the property that's the furthest back, that's as far back as you can go. And the property that's the closest to the street, that's as close as you can go. And you can build somewhere in between there. So that kind of like overrides the zoning because we really wanna make sure that houses that come in after the fact or when there's a tear down, we want it to be built within the context of the current community. We don't want it to stick out sort of like a sore thumb.
That's pretty limiting in our environment now where we're building in areas like Delmar and everywhere on the island, really. Those houses are getting supplem, getting torn down or added to. And the requirement now is for houses of many more bedrooms than the two-bedroom, one-bath job that's in the neighborhood. How do you trust that?
So I guess this is in areas where you wanna keep the character, so maybe this is not applicable to our, I, I said, maybe you don't. So that's what I'm saying. If the, if the trend is to tear down and really change the character of the neighborhood, then maybe we don't want that. Maybe we want this in existing neighborhoods off-island. Or, you know, it, this doesn't have to be applicable to everything. We've done infill, all this sort of regulation as an overlay for certain neighborhoods that want to protect that character, where you don't wanna have excessive heights or excessive setbacks. So we can talk about that, and we don't even have- So we can talk about that and we don't even have to put this in. This is just something that, um. Helps in areas where we are seeing a lot of those tear downs and you don't wanna see them, but here you may wanna see them.
I just gotta raise a concern about that because, um, on the infill, it seems like it's, if one person gets away with something, because there's a lot of change over here. It takes twenty, twenty-five years, sometimes to build out a subdivision. If somebody gets away with something on one administration, fifteen years later, someone else would come say. He was able to build that close, I'm allowed to be that close. That's what I'm scared of, look at that.
I think we need to look at something in between. Because I have a lot of houses right, our height limit right now is forty-eight feet and I have a lot of houses that are forty-seven feet and seven and three quarter. Inches that are beside some of those one and two story. So maybe if they're in a row that is only. One stories, maybe they can't go the full forty-eight feet. Maybe there's a reduction in height in those areas.
Theoretically, when you buy the lot, you sign on that you agree to all the ordinances within the town of Surf City.
You should make that.
And that's fine. I, I, we literally put this in because we know that in some towns, there are areas that they want to preserve that character. Um, and it could go, this could be not be residential at all, this could be commercial. If you wanna keep your island resident, you know, that town center, you wanna keep that character. You put in something like that. It's, again, it's more to, to make sure that something isn't so drastically different. Just because. It meets that. Um, another example is, again, like you were saying, it takes twenty-five years to get a neighborhood built out. Zoning changes quite frequently through that time. I'll use my, my neighborhood as an example. When my neigh, when my neighborhood was built, we required a thirty foot setback in the front. So my house is setback thirty feet from the road. Now it's five feet. So if my neighbors come in and there's a vacant lot next to my house, there can, but they can build their house five feet from the road, or five feet from the right away. So. That's gonna make my, my street look really different. If everybody on my street's built back thirty feet and we're gonna have one house. But if they wanna build a massive house, they can, they can move it up five feet, but that's what the zoning currently says. But if we had an infill. They would have to be back thirty feet as well. So it's just, again, allowing that. So you don't have to do it for height. You don't even have to do it for the setback. It's, it's really, we what, we put and we offer this just as something. To get that conversation started, to say, where do you wanna preserve what is here, what is historically here? But that might not be right, it's right for Surf City, especially in the area of the island where you do have a lot of these houses being torn down and replaced.
I think we missed our boat on the island.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I am so sorry I'm taking so long. I apologize again for my coughing fit. Here's our homework. Uh, articles six and eight are in the SharePoint right now. Um, if you got, I think we asked you to look at it beforehand and then they weren't in the folder. They were in like with all the sections, but they weren't in the folder like review before the meeting. So anyway, articles six and eight are currently on there. We are gonna get articles four, five and seven shortly. What you'll see very first thing is going to be that description of the zoning districts. If you can review that and get that back to us super quickly, that would be great. Um, because, well, like I said, we'd like to turn that around, get that finished so that we can get four, five and seven out to you. Um, if you need printed copies of any sections, see Amy. Um, as I said, the land use code update SharePoint is for your comments. Um, the next one, remember to indicate what terms need definitions or graphics. That's for the definition section, that's chapter nine. Um, again, any comments that you have not made on any of the sections that you've seen, so that's one, two, three. Six and eight, we would like those comments by March twenty-ninth. Then we're gonna get you, while you're working on all of this till March twenty-ninth, we're gonna get you articles four, five and seven. We would like those to you by Friday, April twelfth. Those comments back to us. Because, oh my gosh, I didn't change the thing again, I'm so sorry. There it goes. There, now y'all know what I was looking at. Um, I will get you, and you'll also get a PDF of this presentation so that you can see that. So again, any comments on the sections that you have seen thus far, plus tonight, the twenty-ninth, and then, uh, Friday, April twelfth for the next three sections. And then moving forward, um, once we get all the comments provided, we're gonna take about two weeks, so after that April twelfth date. Um, my company, my team will get together and we will do our QA QC, we will put together hyperlinks. Right now you have all individual sections, we're gonna put that back together into one document. Um, we'll put a copy of that on the website for everybody to see. There'll be an in-person joint planning session, an education session for both planning board, steering committee and. The, uh, town board, town council. We'll go through the ordinance changes, we'll build consensus, we'll take all of those comments that you have put into the documents thus far. We'll combine them and until you into a single document and then we'll get to talk about what those are. If there's anything that's still kind of outstanding. That we don't have agreeance on, that we'll kind of come to, um, uh, you know, consensus. Then we'll wanna address, again, to my chicken story, I would like to address all of those comments prior to going to our public hearing. And to before we go to the board, uh, come back to you for a recommendation. Um, that joint work session will be sometime in April, probably late April. The thought is if everything goes well at that meeting and we do have a really good conversation. And we have finally addressed any of those outstanding issues, we should be able to turn around any, um, comments or edits by May. And that we would hope to have a, a recommendation from planning board by May ninth. If not, that can get pushed back to June, but we would really like to try for that May ninth date. And then have a public hearing and town council meeting on June fourth. These are tentative dates. Um, we will, and we'll get a full date too for that joint work session in April. But, um, this is where we're trying to go forward. And then basically, if you have any questions, um, that's Greg and myself. Um, Greg is a former planner with Pender County. He joined our team about a year ago. Um, he is full of energy. Um, he is old enough, or I'm old enough to be his mother, so, um, it's great working with him. He brings a really good sense of energy. And a fresh perspective to a lot of stuff, so really enjoy having him on the team. Um, if you, again, have any questions or comments, I'd love for you to hear them now, but I know you'd have other business to get on to, so. Feel free to email us, um, chat with Amy. Uh, one of the other things we talked about possibly having was just like. Um, it's a team call or a Zoom call and I'll just be on the computer for like an hour and if anybody has any questions. Sort of a drop-in to kind of discuss some of your comments or questions. Um, just because we wanted, like, and start getting all these comments together, putting them into the document and getting this off to you, so. Um, I appreciate your feedback and your attention tonight. Uh, hopefully I didn't put you all to sleep and you can get through your, the rest of your business okay tonight, so. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Amy, next on our agenda is a subdivision. Approval for Waymouth bats.
Hey Chris. Can I throw my, um, screen? Why I'd get my computer up anyway. So while I'm getting my computer, um, up and running, this one is, um, another parcel over on Belt Road. We have, um. We've talked about this, this very parcel a few times before. This will be the fourth lot coming off of this particular parcel. It is a one acre lot. That fronts, uh, Belt Road. Um, it will not be served by our utilities. It will be served by Pender County Water and, um, thank you ma'am. It'll be by Pender County Water and, um. Septic, thank you. Words are hard when you aren't reading them. But basically this is the same thing as every other one. It's over two acre, the parent parcel is over two acres. It's been subdivided more recent than ten years. Obviously, three other times since I've been here. Um, so it has to follow the major process, which is one of the things that we're working on. In the zoning ordinance, getting written out that things like this don't have to go through the major process. But I have, uh, in your packet is just the request to repu, re, to approve it as submitted. It meets all the, um, current zoning. Standards. Um, again, it's a one acre, single family lot, zoned R-ten, which is ten thousand minimum square foot lot. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You can just continue to piece me all this thing.
That's the feeling I'm getting. So he's left a right of way to get into the back so that if he wanted to build a road in and do something with the remainder. Um, but right now he seems to be selling them off in just creating one acre, actually one to two acre lots, um, across that frontage.
Make a motion, we approve it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Amy, update us on the ordinance revision, please.
Yes ma'am.
Um, so I am requesting a text amendment to appendix A, section four point one point one seven, the CFOD Coastal Forest Overlay District. Um, just a little background, appendix A of the town ordinances creates the zoning requirements for the town. The town is currently working on the zoning and subdivision ordinance. Um, so they reflect, they recently adopted comprehensive land use plan. Ordinances that require more immediate attention are being brought forward on an individual basis. Although they are being brought forward at this time. Additional changes may be ma, made during the update process. The Coastal Forest Overlay District was created to help preserve and protect the remaining maritime forest and natural vegetation in the town's most vulnerable areas. This zoning district encompasses all portions on Topsail Island and properties adjacent to the coastal waters and wetlands. Um, this zoning district was also. Hoping to help address some of their stormwater issues from runoff that we have on the island. The Coastal Forest Overlay District ordinance requires that all material outside of the principal structure's footprint. And any accessory structures be of a pervious material. Town staff has traditionally interpreted this to include the repair and or replacement of existing non-pervious. Pervious material. Two recent, recent instances caused staff to review the procedure. As existing non-pervious concrete was replaced with non-pervious concrete. As the replacement and repair of existing concrete increases, staff has amended the ordinance to include this historical interpretation. So. Basically, staff had interpreted it that if you have to remove the material, if it's concrete, asphalt, whatever, and you have to remove it. Then you have to, it's gone, so you have to put it back with a pervious material. And then if you bring in any new stone. It has to be a clean washed stone, you can't continue to bring in, um, old stone. So what we have done is placed that in the ordinance, so, um, I've provided how the comprehensive plan. Um, supports this in three point one point H-one, four point one point O-one and five point one point X-one. Um, the ordinance is in your, I don't know why there's a blank page. Um, the ordinance change is in your packet, but. Basically, what we changed is the maximum total, total footage for driveways is twenty-four feet of we, width. At the street, consisting of no more than two twelve foot driveways or a combination thereof, not to exceed two driveways and twenty-four feet width. Total dra, wide total driveway width.
It gives me a lot of heartburn.
It's what it already said.
No, you have nothing about the size of the lot in there.
We never did. It has always said the maximum total footage for driveways is twenty-four feet. Through me and I had not read that yet.
It's got a twenty-four foot driveway and a twelve foot driveway, but it's a hundred foot lot.
When we, I permitted that, I had not read this portion of the ordinance. The driveway portion up front in the chapters up front allows it. The Coastal Forest Overlay District has never truly allowed that.
That's only in the Coastal Overlay District?
Yes, sir. It's only in the Coastal Forest Overlay District. That was a mistake on my part.
Well, this was ocean front and there's no room to get.
I know exactly what house you're talking about because I'm the one that made the mistake.
Thank you.
And that's why that extra language was put in there, um, was to clarify. That it says twenty-four feet because it's the same thing on corner lots. We get the argument a lot on corner lots as well. You have. Fifty, or a hundred foot here and fifty foot here, why can't you have two? Well. It was never allowed, or at least since the Coastal Forest Overlay District came in.
This what, this ordinance you're saying here is only, well, the whole island is in the Coastal Forest Overlay District, so. Anything on the ocean front, we're limited to a fifty foot, I mean, a twenty-five foot driveway, even the damn piece of property is a mile long.
Now, Mr. Ward, you know if that property was a mile long, you would subdivide it and make additional money.
Not necessarily. I'd keep it and take it with me when I die.
Tell me why, yeah. Then you won't need a driveway, will you?
Yeah, I would. I'd take that too. No, I mean, it, it seems like it's a glaring error there.
That's something that we can look at in, in the future in changing it. Um, even if you don't accept that. Portion of the words there, it will still be the twenty-four foot maximum at this time. So even if I take out my words for explaining that. It'll still be a twenty-four foot maximum at this time. And then the other, you can see in red further down here, is pervious material shall be used, um, for the construction and maintenance of any surfaces located outside the footprint. Of the principal structure and any accessory buildings allowed. And then the new words are again in red, in any instance where impervious materials located outside of roof structure are to be removed. They shall be replaced with pervious material without regard to amount or consistency with other materials present at the site.
By having the "end maintenance" up at the beginning, does that mean if you have a section of the driveway where it's chipped and rebar showing and you wanna patch it? You can't patch it with pervious material?
If you're, like, if you're just doing an overlay over it, then you're not removing it. So I would not consider that to need a driveway permit. You're not changing the material, you're just putting a thin layer of. Whatever, whatever you would call that, not quick set, but.
When you chip concrete, I usually have to cut it out to redo it.
He's saying you're putting just a thin skin of something over it.
He's worried about the word "end maintenance."
End maintenance, because the thing is, as somebody who has a pervious driveway there. I, I am now motivated to maintain it because the option to replace it is I gotta go non-pervious.
So I would say the next sentence says, in any instance where impervious material located outside of the roof structure are to be removed. So you would not be removing it, you would be maintaining it. So if it's being removed, it has to be replaced with pervious material. If you are not.
It felt like the "end maintenance" added up.
Because you're gonna tell me that the only way that I can maintain the contract, concrete is by removing it because I can't actually fix concrete because that's what people call and tell me. So if you're gonna put a thin coat of something on it or a sealant or something like that. Like in a. You're the, you're, y'all are the construction people.
Well, that's why I'm asking because that seems like that's restrictive.
If you're not removing it.
Cause it, the second set of red text covers what you're talking about. The first one seems like it could be more restrictive.
How you fix concrete without removing it? I just had the repair work done at my house on the island and they had to cut out what was.
I don't necessarily know how to do that either. Um, but.
Had to remove a small section, that has to go back as pervious.
My driveway is twenty-five years old, it definitely doesn't meet these standards, but if I have to replace a section of it, is what he's saying, it's not gonna match the rest of the driveway. And that's considered maintenance, you know. Like, I just had construction work done at my house and they dropped some stuff on my driveway. It damaged it, but in order to replace that, you don't just coat over it, you, you have to cut it out with a saw and replace it.
And we could do a percentage, like if you're, if you're only removing like, like a five by five square, then, or in, you know, in the center, but.
It just seemed like it was restrictive.
What we're finding out.
Removing the entire driveway and putting in a whole new one.
Yeah, because that's what's happening, not you, but you're coming to me and saying, oh, I'm doing maintenance on my driveway and then I tear the whole thing out and I put brand new concrete in. And then I get twenty-seven calls from your neighbors wanting to know why you were allowed to put concrete in. Cause you know he's on the planning board and he said that he could do it, you know what I mean? So this is a way, this was, this is the way that it was historically, um, treated. So this is a way to clarify that and I'm fine with saying, you know, if you replace more than twenty percent.
Yeah, greater, yeah, yeah, that makes more sense.
Something like that. I'm, I'm fine with adding some of that language in there. What I don't want though is for the people who are replacing. What I don't want though is for the people who are replacing whole driveways um or, you know, half of it out to the street, which is really where we need the impervious anyway to help impervious, the pervious, to help catch that water that's, you know, rolling down to the road. Um, we're spending a lot of money to help do something with the water that's rolling down the two-air roads. And this is a small way um to help create that. So I'm fine with saying any instance in which, any instance where impervious materials located out of the roof structure are to be removed and exceed 20% of the total area then.
What percentage was yours, Mike?
I mean, if it's as small as he just said, it couldn't have been that big of a percent.
It was a small bit, but my driveway, like I said, I mean, that's what I love about my house is that it's a whole driveway. You know what I mean?
Your driveway.
It's great for basketball, I mean, it's great.
Well, and some of these old driveways are so cracked up that they're almost pervious now.
Well, that's my issue, mine's starting to crack. So I'm wondering if I take a piece off.
And when you take it out, you're actually putting in something worse because it's, nobody tears out good concrete. So you're taking something that has been made pervious over time by Mother Nature and your trucks and tractors and, you know, whatever you're driving over it, and putting back something that's creating even more runoff by putting that new, good, beautiful, broomed concrete, you know, back in there. So, yeah, I'm good with like, it's.
It's on the island's of luxury, so, yeah.
Right? So I am good with saying like 20% or something, you know, similar to that, if y'all are.
That's fair.
And I will make that um, and what I take forward to council is that it's a 20%. Or removal exceeds 20% of the total area. And this is, the reason we also said un, that it's not under-roofed structure is I have had some people come in and pour the concrete back under their house. And that's fine because your roof is already making it non-pervious. So that, we did pull that out too because I want everybody to know, if you're replacing the concrete under your house, it can be traditional concrete.
Do we have a motion to approve this?
We should approve. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Me.
You are, okay.
Yes.
Carrie, but my question is, are you opposed to the width part or the replacement?
Driveway part.
The width, the driveway width part.
You're not being tied into a lot size.
Okay.
I couldn't build that house now after you enforced that.
You should, if I had read the ordinance correctly, you wouldn't have gotten the permit at the time. So nothing is changing.
I'd have to divide it into two lots and build two houses. How does that help anything?
Yeah, or ask for a variance or work to get the ordinance changed. So we can look at that.
I'm working to get the ordinance changed.
We can look at that and the ordinance rewrite. But the ordinance that passed tonight didn't have, didn't change that 24-foot at all. That's all I have on that one.
Amy, do you have any updates for us?
I have a um pre-submitting meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks with Applewood Trace. So they are, it looks like, um, working on moving forward with that project. Um, we are reviewing in-house or on the TRC right now. We are reviewing the um, the proximity, which is that other side of Bishop Creek. So we do have those plans that we are reviewing. Um, just got a, you will probably see it next month because it is a straight zoning request um change for, does everybody know where Dana Line Drive is? When you leave Lowe's and you're coming back towards us, um, on the left is the Community College. On the right, there's a brick house and then there's two vacant lots. Those two vacant lots are looking at requesting a zoning change. So you'll see them um in the next week. And then we are looking at a conditional district for um what I always call the Rochelle property. It's the property behind um, behind Wellman's Shops there that runs, and Glen Acres, that runs from the roundabout over to JH Bats and then from JH Bats, almost a Little Kinston, but not quite a Little Kinston. And they're requesting a um town home type subdivision on that conditional district. So we are waiting for additional information on that. Um, and once they do, we'll continue with that process. I think those are our big projects right now.
Evolve.
An evolve, but we don't have plans yet.
I'm meeting with them next week.
Okay, prices meeting with Evolve next week. So anticipate uh plans for Evolve out on 17 as well. Um, there is a race for air remaining sewer capacity right now.
A sprint.
It is a sprint there. It is a full-on.
Sprint.
Any update on the Govee, Azul?
Um, I am reviewing their project now. They've gotten me everything. It is 4,998 square feet. So I hope it'll end with um staff level review. I hope to have that out next week, unless there's something still missing on the plans. The letter that came back said that they addressed everything that was requested by all staff members. I just need, and then they brought me the rest of the stuff that had been missed. So hopefully everything will be good and we can have it in the next week. That's it.
Have a motion to adjourn?
We want to stay.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?